Call the meeting to order. Series Planning Commission meeting for Monday, May the sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two, six P M. I understand at this point, and we'll be reading some information into the record, which I don't have because I wasn't expect to be chair tonight. So at this point, Mrs. Montgomery, could you read into the record to the information that's necessary?
I'd be most happy to. This meeting will be held in accordance with California Government Code, Section five nine four five three, subdivision E of the Ralph M. Brown Act, California Government Code, Section five four nine five zero at SEC, Series Resolution Number two thousand twenty-two thirty-four in the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act. While this meeting will be physically open to the public, given the state of emergency regarding the threat of COVID nineteen, members of the public may also participate in comment via the application Zoom. Remote public comment is also available for the Planning Commission meeting by emailing planning@ci.series.ca.us by five P M. The date of the meeting include the agenda item number or public comment period in the subject line of the email. The clerk may read written comments into the record if specifically requested to do so at the beginning of your email. Your written comment will be distributed to the Planning Commission and kept on file as part of the official record of the Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, with that, let's do the pledge allegiance. If we could put the flag up, please, I'll say the pledge. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I believe our next item is roll call.
Yes, please note that Chairperson Smith is excused this evening. So we have Commissioner Del Nero.
President.
Commissioner Johnson.
President.
Commissioner Katchel.
Here.
And Commissioner Martinez.
Present.
Conflict of interest declaration. Do any commissioners have any conflicts on any of the items on tonight's agenda?
No.
Okay. Citizens Communications at this time. While the Planning Commission welcomes and encourages participation in the planning commission meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of planning commission and not on the post agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the commission from taking action on any matter which is not on the post agenda unless it's determined to be an emergency by the planning commission. Citizens are entitled to address the planning commission on any agenda items subject to the five-minute provision. If you want to comment, please push the apparently there's a comment button on your screen if you're using a computer. And let us know if you have a comment. And do we have anybody that wants to comment?
Um, yes, I see Nick Maynard has his hand raised on Zoom.
All right, Mr. Maynard, go ahead and make your comment, please.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we hear you now.
I was waiting for somebody to unmute me. So my concern is that, you know, I live on San Pedro Avenue, right off of Morgan there. And there's times in our neighborhood drivers must wait three to five minutes or longer to make a turn on on to Morgan from streets like San Pedro, Tasha Drive, or Kenzer on to Morgan. So this subdivision is going to increase the number of vehicles in the area. It's usually what I've seen, two to four per average series household, increase traffic and make it more difficult to drive safely without improving infrastructure.
Okay, sir, excuse me.
Sure.
That item is on the agenda shortly. This period is for matters which are not on the posted agenda. Oh, okay. If you please, if you please save your comment for just a few minutes from now, we'll be glad to listen to it again. Okay?
Sure.
Thank you, sir. Do we see anybody else?
No, I see no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, then we'll move from citizen communication to the consent calendar. We have three items on the agenda. Item number one is the clerk's report of posting for for this agenda, which was posted on May the eleventh. Item two is approval of minutes for April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. And three is general correspondence information only, the series downtown revitalization area quarterly report third quarter. So can we get a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to move the consent agenda calendar.
Do we get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion second for the agenda. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Martinez.
Yes.
Commissioner Del Nero.
Aye.
And Commissioner Katchel.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero with one absent.
Okay, there was nothing removed from the consent calendar. Next, we'll go to the public hearing. And this is the this is item number four on agenda, Plan Community Development Plan, that's P C D P twenty-two dash zero seven. Proposal for a Plan Community Development Plan entitlement for the home designs and their placement on the thirty-eight single-family lots of the previously approved Cambridge Estates Phase Two subdivision located at twelve hundred and twelve oh six Hackett Road, Bright Development is the applicant. Sequel status, it's consistent with the mitigated declaration already adopted for this project. And can we have a past staff report, please?
Uh, if if I may, before we do the staff report, there's a gentleman here in the in the audience here that is on his work break and he would like to provide his comments before he has to go back to work. And so at the at the chair's pleasure, that would be our request that he be allowed to speak.
Oh, that's fine. I appreciate him taking the time to show up. Hopefully, we can get him back to work.
All right, you want to come on over to the podium?
Please give your name and address for the record.
And try to speak up, thanks.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, hi, my name is Dominic Moore. I live next door to this project. And we have my wife and my neighbors that live there. I'd like to say first of all, I'm not casting aspersions. The crew that's been out there has been very professional. It's just this weekend, we were expecting them, they're not to be working on the weekends. And so we're trying to do like family thing and they're loading stuff and I said, sorry, man, I'm just loading up. You know, getting load supplies. So I'm just wondering, I thought there was like a, I've never seen anything fortified and riding, but uh, we're expecting them not to start before seven. They're out there at six o'clock making noise. And we're right next door. Uh, and I don't know who to call if there's a problem, and I want to see whether or not we get a reprieve on weekends. There's no peace and quiet. Um, but the people that I know, it is what it is. It's noisy, it's dusty, lots of diesel, lots of hogging. Like I said, the crew's very professional, this is what it is. But I'm just wondering if there's on such a project, the people that live next to that area, is there, is there, what are the hours of work?
That's an excellent question. Can staff respond to that for us?
Actually, I have a quick question, staff. Uh, so can you clarify, were they there working or were they there offloading supplies for the following week?
Offloading supplies with power, but still, there was still.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, but no, I'm not casting aspersions, but I just want to get, see what it is. And then if I got a problem, do I call the gentleman here? Michael. Michael, James Michaels, if I got a problem, or who I call if I got a problem with the job, the boys are doing something crazy.
This is, this is, James, can I interrupt?
Go ahead, sir.
This is, this is engineering. This is Sam with engineering. The person to get in touch with be in the engineering department, you'd call us at five three eight five six one seven. That's my direct line. I'll get in touch with the project manager who's who's or the contractor for the for the for the company who's doing the work. Uh, I'll try to straighten up the operation hours. It should be from seven o'clock to three thirty. And the dust control should be should be to minimize, to minimize dust control should be addressed to minimize any 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 air pollutant. And we'll definitely make sure that we're trying to avoid any you know, any any dust in the air.
Definitely, Monday through Friday, seven to three thirty?
Yeah, from seven o'clock, it should be from seven o'clock to three thirty. That's their normal operation hours.
Monday through Friday.
By three thirty, they should be buttoned up. There should be, there should be closing line of their operation.
Saturday and Sunday?
Saturday and Sunday is not, is not, that's not required.
Okay.
I think they should have an exception from us.
You can ask them to tighten it up, but I got no problems. They're all been nice. I mean, I know the business. It's not easy thing to do. But I just want to have it like a Sunday where we can just sit in our backyard and have a barbecue, so to say.
No worries. I'll have the staff address the issue with the contractor out there.
Awesome. I've been here before. I've seen all you guys at beautiful places, you've been through Zoom, but thank you so much. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I want to thank staff also for jumping in there and helping out. Appreciate that.
Yeah.
And now can we go back and have our staff report?
Uh, thank you very much. James with the city of City Planning Division. So Christopher, would you be able to put up page forty-five of the agenda?
Uh, yes, in a moment. So go ahead and start talking and I'll.
Okay, well, yeah, it's basically what what this is. Uh, the commission is considering tonight is not the subdivision itself, that the subdivision uh, and all the related access points uh, have been approved back in twenty eighteen. And there was a time extension of that map. Uh, the developer of that product has been working with the our engineering folks making the necessary preparations for construction of the subdivision improvements. And so part of the condition with that map that was approved back in twenty eighteen is that the development is going to require a Plan Community Development Plan entitlement.
James, what page again?
Okay, it's gonna be forty-five.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sharing my screen now. Sorry to interrupt.
It's all right. You got it?
Is that it?
Uh, no. Go to forty-five. I'm looking at the column at the left, forty-five.
Forty-five. Oh, oh, okay.
You're all right. You got it? Yeah, right there. Yeah, just highlight that and hopefully, yeah, there we go. So what you see, what you're seeing on the screen is what was approved. Um, this this Cambridge is, this is known as Cambridge Estates Phase Two subdivision. It's had an interesting history over the, since two thousand two, it's been approved like three separate times. Um, and two thousand two and two thousand fifteen, when it was approved, those uh, times that the expiration dates lapsed. And so in twenty eighteen, the developer came back again, basically the same layout as you're seeing here. Um, and anyway, but part of the, one of the conditions for this subdivision is that the planning commission would be reviewing the home plans. Uh, so looking at the floor plans and the building elevations for the project, I mean, and that's what the limit of the scope of the review is tonight. And so basically, that that's what we're we're here tonight. It's not about the subdivision itself. It's just to review the home plans for each of the lots there. Um, could you go to page fifty, Christopher?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And so what you have here is the typical layout for, there's going to be like three home plans. Okay, basically, you have a sixteen hundred square foot home plan, a eighteen thirty-five, thousand eight hundred thirty-five square foot home plan, and a two thousand fifty-nine square foot home plan. And so they're they're spread out accordingly, as you see it here. Proposed setbacks, basically, you're going to be looking at the front and exterior yard setbacks. Minimum fifteen feet to property line for living area. Uh, front yard setback for a garage will be the typical twenty feet. A minimum rear yard setback will be at least ten feet from property line. Side setbacks will be at least five feet for the interior and fifteen feet for the exterior street side yard property lines. All right, could you go to page fifty-two? Okay, so here is a, basically, there's with the three home plans, there's still five themes, potential themes for each of those home plans. Basically, it's for most of them, for what the applicant has provided is basically three. Three, and they might consist of a Spanish theme, a farmhouse, or a French country theme. Uh, and that's kind of what you're seeing here on the example here for the sixteen hundred square foot model here. Most of these will have either a brick or, you know, a stone type of veneer along the front. The all in all, there's going to be about fifteen, there's fifteen color schemes uh, that are also have been included in the staff report, which you could peruse if you haven't already. Uh, basically, they're going to be like an earth tone type of shades. The, all these homes are going to be single-story height that we specifically had a condition on that uh, on the map that would not allow for two-story. Okay, so people won't be able to look in someone else's backyard, per se. But essentially, we are in support of this uh, development plan. We believe that there's high-quality building materials with architectural features that complement the surrounding area. Uh, and so that concludes staff's presentation.
All right, thank you very much. Do any commissioners have any questions at this time of staff?
I have a couple of questions.
Go right ahead.
Uh, James, I just had two. What was the initial holdup in two thousand and five and twelve? And was it Bright Homes each time?
No, good question. I think at that particular that particular time, I wasn't, unfortunately, I wasn't around at that particular time, but I think there's just some timing on on trying to find a developer, a home builder uh, for these, both two thousand two and two thousand five. You know, and so that was, I believe, the big, the big issue, you know, with prices, just the way the economics were both of those times. And that was the the primary reason, you know.
Did you have, do you have another question?
No, sir, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions at this point? Okay, if we have no other questions from the commission, let's open the public hearing. Uh, is the applicant or the applicant's representative available to speak? I guess that's a no.
Uh, they're here. I just saw them raise their hand.
Okay.
There we go. Can unmute yourself now?
Okay.
Welcome to the commission. Please identify yourself and go right ahead.
Uh, thank you. My name's Dave Butts. I'm with Bright Development and you know, we acquired this project last summer and have been working diligently on it ever since. Uh, the city council approved the final map week last Monday, and we're currently in the middle of land development. So I'm here to answer any questions you might have regarding the product proposed.
Okay, do any of our commissioners have any questions at this point of the applicant? Okay, I guess not. I just my comment, I was going to ask. Given the history of this thing, is this going to really happen this time? But since we heard earlier that the maps recorded in your beginning preparation of site, I guess that means we are going to see this project actually take place now.
Yeah, we hope to start building houses around August.
Okay, and personally, I do like the mix of the three different sizes that you've got. I think it speaks to the market in a good way and healthy way. That's just my observation. Do you have any other comments at this point of this applicant? Okay, thank you, sir.
I think there may be one other person that commented before, but.
That's what I was just going to ask. Anyone else want to comment? That was the gentleman we heard from earlier. It's time, now would be time to speak.
Okay, can you guys hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Yes, sir.
So this is, this is more about infrastructure. So I'm not, I'm not sure I'm in the right meeting. Should I be attending a city council meeting and asking these questions?
No, this project, the the map itself, including the roadways and all that, and the lots, were all approved in two thousand eighteen. And that subdivision map has been recently recorded, as I understand it. This meeting is to look at the design of the homes that are going to be built on the site. That was a requirement of the map. So the project itself and the layout is already approved and has been since two thousand eighteen. Tonight, we're looking at the the houses, the layout of the houses, the design of the houses, the architecture of the houses, that sort of thing. Am I right in that, James?
That's correct.
Yeah, well, the architecture, all that stuff, that's just fine. And, you know, we're going to, you know, more homes, you know, A M P N fifty-eight unit apartment complex on the corner. That's all great and everything that's going on in service and Mitchell. But, you know, what what that creates is more traffic. So that's why I'm trying to figure out where do I, where do I go to voice those concerns and possibly get the infrastructure? I mean, we, if we get more homes and more cars and more people, we have to, we have to, you know, have a infrastructure plan.
That was all a part of the subdivision map in two thousand eighteen, if I understand it correctly.
Well, I missed that meeting. So where can I, where can I, you know, voice those concerns?
As far as voicing the concerns, that's what you're doing here, but the decision was made four years ago.
Well, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to.
Go ahead.
I'm not, I'm not trying to say that we need to, you know, that I that I object to this subdivision. I'm just talking about the infrastructure. So you're saying the infrastructure was 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 talked about in two thousand eighteen?
Well, that would have been part of the approval. I suggest at this point, what you might want to do is is go down to the planning department and check them, and if their staff can provide you with the maps and the requirements that we put map.
Yeah, if I may, yeah, yeah, Chairperson, this is James. Uh, Mr. Maynard, you, it seems like you're looking at the infrastructure improvements, roadway improvements. That would be on the subdivision improvement plans. Uh, and so we have engineering division staff that I don't know if you'd need employment, or it might be best to try and talk with one of our engineers. Basically, that's overseen that, and then they could probably pull out the subdivisions uh, improvement plans that we, that they have on file and can go over it with you.
So I need to call Sam, because he's.
Yes, you could, you could, you could definitely call me uh, at any time and schedule an appointment just ahead of time. Just give me heads up that you're coming in, and I'll be more than happy to address um, any questions that you have in regards to the infrastructure and to the roadway improvement that we're going to be doing on Morgan Road here in a few months.
Okay, is your email publicly available on the series, City of Series website?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so can I just email you and schedule an appointment that way? Is that the best?
That would be great. Yes, I would prefer that.
Okay, that's what I'll do. Thank you, gentlemen, and.
Thank you.
All right, bye-bye.
Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on this matter, either in person or online, or anyone on the calls that we can see?
I see no more hands raised on Zoom. Christopher, is there anyone else in the council chambers?
I just see Dave Butts has his hand raised. But he's the, he's with the developer and he did speak. So, oh, he just put his hand down. Okay.
Okay. And so then we have no other comments on the matter? I guess then we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the planning commission for discussion and action. Any commissioners have any additional comments at this point in time? No. So was that you saying you're going to make the motion then, Gary?
Well, you know, I might as well. Yes, sir. We accept P C D P entitlement consistent with previous adopted mitigated negative declaration and approval of twenty-two oh seven P P C D P subject to the findings and condition contained in the attached draft revolution, P C twenty-two twelve. Will that cover it?
I think so. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, will the clerk then please take the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Del Nero.
Aye.
Commissioner Martinez.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
And Commissioner Katchel.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero with one absent.
Well, thank you very much. That concludes that item. I, I like what's happening here. It's good to see that after all these years, something's going to happen on the ground and we all know the housing shortage in California. And every one of these will help just that little bit. So it's good to see it's happening. And thank you to Bright Development. Okay. With that, I believe what we do next is adjourn as the planning commission.
Uh, Bob? Yes, sir. We have a presentation tonight from the Economic Development Department?
When I finish the sentence.
Oh, I'm so sorry, sir.
It's okay.
You got a little.
Adjourn as the planning commission and reconvene as a series downtown revitalization area board. Call to order by me. Says Chairperson Smith here, but that's who I am tonight. Uh, can we take the roll for this meeting, please?
Yes, please note that Chairperson Smith is excused this evening. So we have Board Member Del Nero.
President.
Board Member Johnson.
Here.
Board Member Katchel.
Here.
And Board Member Martinez.
Present.
Any conflict of interest declaration on anything related to the downtown revitalization board?
Oh.
Okay, new business was the item five. That's the series downtown revitalization area board annual report. And I believe we would have a report from that from Mr. Sims. See here for us.
Yes, good evening, planning commissioners, series downtown revitalization area board members. Christopher, could you please bring up page one-ten of the agenda for me? It would be Exhibit A of the C-DRAB area?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Again, I'm Anthony Sims, the redevelopment economic development manager for the City of Series. We are here tonight for the series downtown revitalization area board to consider and recommend the C-DRAB annual budget for fiscal year twenty-two twenty-three to the city council. The item before you this evening is a request to consider assessing a levy on all businesses located in the series downtown revitalization area for fiscal year twenty-two twenty-three. If the C-DRA annual annual budget for fiscal year twenty-two twenty-three is recommended to the city council by the planning commission, a public hearing will be held at a future city council meeting in June for city council to approve the C-DRA annual budget for fiscal year twenty-two twenty-three. A little history on the subject. The series downtown revitalization area was formed in nineteen eighty-nine by the downtown business owners themselves as part of a parking business improvement district. Its purpose was to generate revenue to assist in the maintenance upkeep and revitalization efforts of the downtown area. Since the area's origination and assessment has been levied annually by the city council on all businesses within the boundaries of the revitalization area shown in Exhibit A. The funds raised from this annual assessment are restricted in their purpose. They must be used to pay for projects and activities that promote and positively contribute to the enhancement of the downtown commercial district. Please note, the proposed levy has not changed since its adoption originally in nineteen eighty-nine. Generally, the assessment is ten to twenty-five dollars per month on all businesses. Uh, and that's based on gross receipts. For this next fiscal year, the assessment is expected to raise approximately ten thousand seven hundred dollars for direct district activities, as was identified in the annual report. These funds, including the budget reserve funds, will pay for electricity for the downtown street lighting program, holiday lighting, rotation of seasonal overhead banners. Once again, staff is not proposing any increase. Once again, staff is not proposing any increase in the annual rate of assessment for this next fiscal year. This evening, the planning commission series revitalization area board is asked to consider the annual budget fiscal year twenty twenty-two twenty-three. And recommend to city council, staff recommendation to adopt the proposed resolution, which will establish and assess a levy. On all businesses located in the series downtown revitalization area for the fiscal year twenty-two twenty-three. Again, the projected revenue for the revitalization area from assessed levies is targeted at ten thousand seven hundred dollars this coming year. If the budget items out of the reserves were commenced in this next fiscal year, these expenditures would be twenty-two thousand six fifty. Resulting in a budget deficit of eleven thousand nine fifty that would come from existing reserves in the CDRAB account. The deficit, it's average and it's expected each year. The annual expenses are running fairly close to the annual revenue for many years. Revenue generally runs between fifteen thousand and eighteen thousand per year when all the businesses are occupied and thriving. The, so just a little update on the CDRAB reserve balance. The projected fund balance as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two is targeted to be fifty-six thousand three fifty-six. So going forward, adding the projected revenue of ten thousand seven hundred and deducting the projected expenditures of twenty-two thousand six fifty. The reserve balance is projected to be at forty-four thousand four sixty-six by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, one year from now. Also, please note that a correction needs to be made within the resolution. The third whereas paragraph mentions fiscal year twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two twice. The correction should be fiscal year twenty twenty-two twenty-three in both occurrences. Thank you for your time tonight, I'm available to answer any questions that the planning commission series downtown revitalization board may have, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, you laid that out really nicely, appreciate that. Commissioners, comments, questions, concerns, issues with this? Mr. Martinez, you got anything?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let Mr. Sims know that when we do this every year, we have one commissioner who tends to dominate this discussion. And she's not feeling well this evening. So it makes the rest of us look like perhaps we're not. Quite on board with it, and I know I have anyway, I should only speak for myself, can rely on. Her and her, her input and expertise and questions on this, this matter, right? Just in general. Revenue seems like, projected revenue seems a little bit low, is this because we have vacancies downtown that?
Yeah, one hundred percent, that, that's the number one reason for that, we have a lot of vacancies downtown, so. Our goal in economic development is to fill those vacant property sites with new businesses to get those normal revenues back where they need to be around eighteen thousand a year.
I don't ask you to be a wizard or know all the answers to everything, but is any of this, do you, in your, just a personal opinion pandemic related?
I believe so, I believe it's a, it's a. Small portion of that, I think, you know, historically and statistically across many downtown communities across the country, it's similar stories. So that's my personal opinion.
Yeah, that's sort of what I thought when I looked through this as well. Any other commissioners have comments or questions about this item?
I have one question, Bob, for Anthony. Do you know why the boundary ends where it does and it doesn't go all the way to Whitmore and encompass all those other small businesses on the way?
This boundary was established in nineteen eighty-nine, this is when it first came into play, so I'm not sure what the, the business climate was at that point in time back then. But that's the best way I can answer that question.
Okay, is there any plans on extending the boundary?
The risk in extending the boundary would be that it's open to vote and it could go away. If it's, you know, so that's kind of what to think about.
Yeah, Daniel, I don't have an absolute answer to your question, but just my recollection. And though I wasn't on the commission back in eighty-nine. But this issue was raised by a former planning commissioner a few years ago about extending the boundary. I think, one, it was created because I think if you look in the area between the northerly limit of the boundary. And Whitmore up there, it's, there are some businesses along Whitmore, but a lot of that's residential in there. And I think that was part of the reason to not extend in that area to try to. Convince those residential people to come into a commercially. Zone to benefit the commercial aspect of it, I think that might have had something to do with it. And then, as was just said by Mr. Sims, we got the same. Response two or three years ago that if you risk opening it up again, you may risk the whole thing. Being altered or impacted, so there's never been any serious effort to open it up, I know one time there was talk about a movie theater or something. Complex coming in, sort of in the northwest corner there. I don't think that ever got very far, but it was being rumored anyway. Could that be included in this thing, and it just, we never really went seriously into expanding the area. Again, because the risk of impacting the current area. Leave things well enough alone, I guess, was the. The advice that we were given at that time, anyway, I think that's a fair assessment, James, does that make sense to you?
Yes, that is, that is correct, and I was just gonna chime in. Mr. Martinez's question. It is for that reason that the boundary wasn't shifted for the north is all the, the majority of those properties to the north are still residential. Be one thing if they were commercial oriented, but they're currently not, you know, and so. That was the primary reason people were looking at that and. But anyway, yeah.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments or questions on this, if not, can we get a motion to recommend this to the city council?
Well, if nobody's going to, I will, I recommend this to the city council. Is there a resolution or not?
Yes, there is.
searching for resolution number.
It'll be twenty-two zero one.
Okay, we'll go with resolution twenty-two zero one, that would be great.
And again, please note that in the third whereas paragraph, it mentions fiscal year twenty twenty-one twenty-two twice. That correction should be fiscal year twenty twenty-two twenty-three, my apologies.
So we're taking a motion on the. Recommended action on page four of agenda, of agenda, item five, staff report, and it reads as follows, just for the record. Review the annual report and adopt planning commission resolution twenty-one dash zero one CDRAB. Accepting the annual report of the series downtown revitalization area board for the twenty-two twenty-three fiscal year. And recommending city council approved report set a public area to consider levy of the proposed assessments for fiscal year twenty. Twenty twenty-two twenty-three, including the changed. Years as mentioned by Mr. Sims. In item three of the resolution, changing that to twenty-two twenty-three. Attorney, is that correct, are we all right now?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion works.
Okay, so we have a motion from. Mr. Del Nero, do we have a second?
Second.
I'll let Ann sort out which of those guys was first. Please take the role, Ann.
Yes, Board Member Del Nero.
Hi.
Board Member Martinez.
Hi.
Board Member Johnson.
Hi.
And Board Member Katchel.
Hi.
Motion passes four zero with one absent.
All right. There goes many piece of paper in front of me, I can't find where I am, here we go. Right now, we will reconvene as the planning commission, so now we're the planning commission again, new business, we have none. Public meetings, we have none, unfinished business, we have none, and matters initiated by planning staff, any commissioners have any? They'd like to say or report or tell us about or ask us about?
Yes, I would just like to apologize to Chairperson Katchel, I was unaware that there's two separate meetings, so I apologize for interrupting you earlier.
Oh, that's no problem, I don't, I'm not aware of what I'm doing half the time anyway, so it's fine, I appreciate somebody keeping an eye on me. I'm not used to doing this, especially on the Zoom calls. This is not a big fan, I understand we're waiting for a part in the council chambers to get our. System up and running again. So maybe we'll be back together sooner than later, I hope. Not a big fan of Zoom, but be that as it may. Anyone else have anything else they'd like to report or question or comment or? Apparently not. So I have nothing, staff, do we have anything from staff? Christopher, you have anything you'd like to report?
Yes, I see Ann smiling, she's about to jump in and remind me something. We sent out a notice to the planning commissioners for free training up in Stockton, and we're curious if anyone signed up for that. And it's okay if you haven't. It's no loss on our part, but we're just curious.
I did not, I think if I were a new commissioner, I might give it serious consideration, but if I haven't learned it by this point, I'm not gonna learn it.
All right, thanks.
You know what that is off the top of your head?
Did you ask where it is?
When?
Oh, it's this Friday. Starting at nine o'clock and it's up in Stockton. On Weber Avenue, I have the information as well as an agenda, if you're interested, I can send that to you.
And can you send it to Commissioner Martinez one more time in an email, please?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Yeah, again, Commissioner Martinez, you might enjoy it, there's a lot of stuff that goes into this job that you may not see on a daily basis. And I can't speak to this class in particular, but I've probably attended thirty or forty commissioners. And commission staff type workshops in my career, and that goes back a very long time. And they're usually very helpful. And it's great because you can ask questions that maybe you didn't even think you needed to know. Because every commission meeting is different and we get issues that you haven't seen before, it can be really helpful, so if you do get a chance, I recommend these kind of classes very much. That said, reports. City attorney, anything from, from that end?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Okay, and. City staff, public works, engineering? No?
No, nothing from engineering or public works.
Okay, thank you, by the way, for jumping in and helping out those people that were. Needing some information.
Oh, you're welcome, yeah, I mean, I'm trying my best, trying to help. We do it on a daily basis in engineering, I mean, the planning department knows exactly what, what we go through, through. Development reviews, approving subdivision maps, and yeah, I mean, we're extremely busy, but yeah.
I know you are, and it's always great when you public ask a question and somebody's there too, if you don't know the answer, tell them how you can get them the answer. Which always satisfies people, as long as they know that somebody's listening to them, so I appreciate your stepping up to the bat and taking it.
You're welcome, thank you.
Anybody have anything you'd ask at this point?
Just a, this is James, just a reminder, in case you weren't aware of it, but. The, our recreation department, they sent out an email to. All the city staff and our council, and on it was the, on the list is the concerts in the park. That's gonna be coming up in, the first one is June fourteenth. So that'll be for six weeks, June fourteenth through July nineteenth. Be every Tuesday from six to eight o'clock at Whitmore Park, so. We'll probably bring it up again at some other point, but just to put the commission, I noticed that that will be coming up, those events.
Do you have a list, list of the bands playing yet?
I don't know, I think they're working on that, but.
Okay. I'm sure. I'd love to see it when they, when they do.
I'm sure they'll come out with that, yeah, so, that's it.
And just in case the other commissioners didn't know, or. I guess the decision on the Snowshack was appealed to the planning commission or to the. City council, the planning commission decision was approved, approved by. We sort of approved it, sort of denied it, a little bit of half and half on that one, as I recall, and that'll go before the planning, city council next, next week, is it?
Yes, so essentially what they're gonna be considering is just the drive-through portion. So the, the decision that the, the applicant appealed was just the drive-through component. Not about the whole decision, so they, they're still operating right now, just without the drive-through, and so that's what's going to be the focus.
We'll see what they have to say about our opinion. All right, well, thank you, at this point, I think we're, we've reached the end of the meeting, so we will adjourn, our next meeting is scheduled to be held Monday, June sixth, two thousand twenty-two, and meeting adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Katchel for sharing the meeting, appreciate your help.
Thank you, Bob, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Have a night.
Bye.
Bye, everyone.